All right, welcome, everybody. We are back in open session. This is the Sherburne Select Board meeting of Thursday, May 29. It is 7:02. Can I have the Assistant Town Administrator read the full agenda for the meeting?
Good evening. After I get through reading the agenda before we vote, we amend the agenda. I have not had any impression public comments this evening. Items can be taken out of order, and traffic's not participating before the hours of the day is made. Item number one, 7pm, is a day to start a public hearing concerned a place submitted pursuant to general law, Chapter 150, Section 157A, and a border collie known as Mia and a shepherd known as Catla, which is owned by Andre Barrows and kept at 41 Perry Street in the town of Sherburne, a dangerous dog, a nuisance dog, as those termed as defined in general law, Chapter 150, Section 136A. The select board may make such findings in order and post-approach under statute concerning the said dog, as may be deemed necessary, which may include remedial action and or restraint or euthanization of the dog. Votes may be taken. Item number two is the Woodhaven Affirmative Clear Action Market Plan. Item number three is the consideration of appointment to the Elder Housing Committee, Theresa Burans, who re- returned, which expired June 15, 2028, and that is a new appointment. Under the consent agenda, the T H Cabo draft minutes of April 17, a one-day lethal license for Blue for U LLC for U E Farm, a one-day lethal license for Taste Spots Catering with the Sherburne Community Center, a one-day lethal license for Ken Honor Free Crafted MA and invented Silverwood Farm, a one-day lethal license for Pauline Bounce with the annual community center foundation meeting, and to authorize the chair to sign the post-attestation from chief slash agency head by appointing a file reform. Item number five is select one reports. Item number six is town administrator update. And then, except for the session will be continued, and item two will be strategy to prepare for contract negotiations with non-violent units pursuant to general law, Chapter 30, Section 21A2 for the police unit. And item three is a strategy session to prepare for contract negotiations with non-violent unit employee pursuant to general law, Chapter 30, Section 21A2 for the DPW director. I want to ask the chair if he could please amend the agenda to remove the draft minutes from the consent agenda.
Yes. All right, any other amendments to the agenda? All right, can I get a motion relative to the amended agenda?
Second.
All right, moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so our first item is a public hearing. So I am going to entertain a motion from the board to enter the public hearing.
We'll open the hearing.
All right, moved and seconded. I'm going to take a roll call vote for this one. Marion?
Yes, aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
And I'm aye as well. So thank you and welcome. So the Sherburne Select Board are meeting to conduct an investigation on a written complaint concerning a border collie named Mia and a shepherd named Pepper, registered to Andre Barrows of 41 Perry Street in Sherburne. So the hearing has been opened. I'm going to read the notice. The Sherburne Select Board will conduct a public hearing to be held on Thursday, May 29, 2025, at 7pm to consider a complaint submitted to the select board on May 8, 2025, to determine whether a border collie named Mia and a shepherd named Pepper, owned by Andre Barrows of 41 Perry Street, Sherburne, Massachusetts, are nuisance dogs or dangerous dogs pursuant to general laws, Chapter 140, Section 157A through C. The select board may make such findings and make votes and issue orders as authorized under the statute concerning the said dogs, as may be deemed necessary, which may include remedial action and/or restraint or euthanization of the dogs. Does anybody in the audience want me to read all of Section 157 aloud? It is also included in the public packet, so... All right, hearing done. I am going to announce the procedure. So we are first going to hear from the party that has made the complaint, and then from anyone else who wishes to speak on his or her support. We will then hear from the dog owner and anyone who wishes to speak in his or her support. We will also receive a report from the animal control officer. And at this time, I would like to ask anybody who intends to speak on this matter on either side to please stand and raise your right hand to be sworn in. All right, so please state your name.
Alexander Frank.
Andre Barrows.
Bishop LaTahier.
And please confirm that you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Yes.
Yes, I do.
All right, thank you. And I will also ask that each of the speakers, before you speak, please identify yourself by name and address for the record. I also want to disclose at the outset that the complainant, Ms. Frank, and I are previously acquainted. She and I are both veterinarians. We did our internship together in 2007, 2008, at the University of Pennsylvania Veterinary Hospital. So I do not believe that that prior association has any positive or negative bearing on this, so I am choosing not to recuse myself as the chair of this hearing. All right, so first up, I guess, the complainant. If, Ms. Frank, if you would like to describe the incident or incidents with the dog.
Say, Dr. Si. So I had to use my computer. My printer wasn't working, but I prepared something. Because I forget to say things. So I'll read it from the computer, and if I need to plug it in at some point, I will. Because I got a lot to say. So my name's Alexander Frank. I live at 62 Maple Street. First of all, I want to clarify that I'm not interested in seeing an animal or animals get euthanized, nor am I interested in getting any money out of this. I seek to have the dogs secured in a physical enclosure when they are outdoors for their safety, so they don't get hit by a car, to avoid the risk of them being in the road and causing a car accident, and in the safety of the community, especially the children, who could walk by and be harmed. My qualifications, I'm a veterinarian, as Dr. Si said, who graduated from vet school in 2007, after which I completed a rotation in small animal medicine surgery before going on to emergency medicine, followed by general practice, and then a high-volume surgeon at the SPCA, which, for those of you who don't know, is the Society for Prevention of Cruelty to Animals, and that was in Philadelphia. And now, currently, I'm a general practitioner in Needham. Prior to that, I was a veterinary kennel technician for years, a veterinary technician, including a surgical technician, and veterinary receptionist. In addition to my veterinary education, I have been with dogs since the moment I was brought home from the hospital, following my birth, as our Irish setter decided I was hers from the moment I came into the house and was my best friend. I was sleeping the crook of her legs once I got out of my crib. My mother was also a breeder of North Terriers during my elementary school years, and I participated in the show ring with our dogs via juvenile showmanship. I could not feel more comfortable with animals, especially dogs, nor could I have a grain of love for them. I've worked with an extensive range of dogs throughout my life and have worked with the most challenging and aggressive dogs, mainly pit bulls in Philadelphia, but other breeds as well, that have had to be handled with rabies bulls. I have never been threatened by any of the aggressive dogs I have been around until the incident that occurred with the border collie at 41 Perry Street. So now, to give you the history on what happened at 41 Perry. Since the almost three years we've been living in Sherburne, I've been biking my route that I take, which goes by 41 Perry Street, two to four times per ride, at least once weekly, not to four times weekly. At first, there was no problem. Then around the early spring of last year, but I can't recall the exact date, as the Sherburne Police Department did not give me any of the records I requested, both via email and in person, on May 21st and May 22nd regarding my reports, I started to note two dogs in the yard at 41 Perry Street, a border collie and a German shepherd, that were not contained in the fence. They would both bark at me when I would ride by, mainly when I was going up the hill from below the home, and then the shepherd would pounce on the border collie. She would get on her back, he would pin her down and snarl and bark in her face until after I had passed. I don't know if he physically harmed her, but it was very loud and startling to me as a veterinarian, and definitely audible to anyone in the home. This continued day after day that I rode by. Sometimes I would say, hey, hey, settle down, leave her alone, like I would to any dog. It was overreacting, but it didn't make a difference. It made me sad. No owners were ever business to speak with, and I didn't risk going in the driveway to try to talk to someone about the obvious behavioral issue. After a while, the border collie learned to stay behind the shepherd and only bark if the shepherd had done his part first of barking, like a pecking order, but then, sometimes she would go too far, and he would pounce on her and put her in her place. Soon the border collie started to get closer to the road, where the shepherd would not come when I passed, barking aggressively. I did not make eye contact, as I know that this is seen as a threat by aggressive dogs and did not want to challenge her. As, um, wait, just a minute. As time went on, she got closer and closer, to the point that she was beyond the white line on her side of the road and off of the owner's property. She got so close to me that I felt her breath on my ankle. I thought it was probably the hurting instinct, but thought this was a bit much, and called town hall. They told me to call the Sherburne Police Department, which I did, and discussed what was happening. I told the person I spoke with that I could feel the dog's breath on my ankle, and I thought it was going to bite me. Something needed to be done. At this point, I don't know what they did, because I don't have records. I started to bike on the opposite side of the street to put distance between myself and the dogs for safety, as one cannot go fast up that hill. On June 24, 2024, just as I had warned the police department, the border collie, uh, let's see, the border collie looked back at the shepherd as I was passing by the house, ran out in the road, and bit my leg. And I have a picture of it, but I can't put it up, because I'm not hooked in. But it's in the police reports, and I'm happy to email it to all of you. But it was a, it went all the way through, drew blood, and you'll see I had to be treated. Something needed to be done. At this point, I don't know what they did. Oh, yeah, this needs going back, because I moved it. Sorry about that. Okay, I immediately called the police department and filed a report. I sent pictures to them of the wound. I went to urgent care to get it flushed out. As all veterinarians know, that a bite is the tip of the iceberg. There's a crushing wound from dog bites that can take some time to clear itself. And the mouth is full of bacteria. And when the teeth penetrate the skin, as she did to my leg, it's like injecting bacteria into the skin with needles. This will cause an infection down, um, will cause an infection known as an access. This location, and I'll show you on my leg, this location, which was right here above the ankle, was particularly concerning, because there is not much soft tissue there. And I had the risk of developing a periosteum infection, known as periostitis. And for those of you who don't know, the periosteum is the vascular covering on the bone. If I develop this, it could lead to a bone infection called osteomyelitis, which can be very hard to treat, sometimes require surgery. In addition, this was very close to my ankle joint. And if the wound became infected, the joint would have become infected and would have required surgery to treat. I went to urgent care and got the wound evaluated, flushed. A tetanus shot was given, and antibiotics were suspended, which I started immediately, and I paid for it out of my pocket. Luckily, I did not develop any complications and feel normally, although it was quite sore for some time. One of the most challenging parts of this situation is that the owners did not have, did not have record of the dog's rabies vaccine status. I was not current on my rabies vaccine, and I would have had to get the ten rabies injections post-exposure if animal control, the animal control officer of Sherburne had not done such a great job finding out this dog was acquired from old neighbors by the current owner, and they were able to dig up a rabies certificate eventually before the window for vaccines for them had passed. I apologize, but it's hard to do it on the computer. That's why I wanted to print it out. So... So then, the owners never said they were sorry for what had occurred and never offered to pay for any of it, by the way. As an aside, on the job, I was, as a veterinarian, I was showing signs of post-traumatic stress disorder, which I tried to ignore in the rooms of animals. I was afraid of some patients, especially border collie breeds, which I had never been before. I tried to show no fear, but I felt it inside. With time, I've been able to work through this, but it is not the same when I am passing people's yards on foot or on bike in dogs' bark that are not contained within a fence. The police then went into action, as far as what actions they could take, from the little I know, with a fine perhaps, and installing some surveillance cameras. Things quietly down for a while, and I saw the electric fence company van in their driveway more than once. Then I started to notice the shepherd out in the front yard again. One day, he started to bark and came towards me as I was biking by the house, and then I noticed him suddenly turn and head back. I looked over and saw, who I now know to be the male owner, sitting in the yard, who must have called him over. The man didn't waver or acknowledge it. I started to hear the dogs bark again as I would have come down the hill, because I think they recognized the sound of my bike at this point. I couldn't see the border collie, but the shepherd was oftentimes out in the front yard again and would bark at me, but did not come beyond the property line into the street. I continued to bike by the house on the opposite side of the street when going up the hill for my protection. On October 9, 2024, the shepherd was barking a lot and out in the street when I was coming up the hill towards the owner's house. I did not advance, as I was scared. I called the police, and they said they would send someone soon. I told them this is not acceptable and must stop. I also told them I have pepper spray, but do not want to use it unless the dog tries to bite me, but by then, it may be too late. "I just don't want to hurt the dog unless it is absolutely necessary," I said. A neighbor drove up by chance in his minivan, who's going to talk to you after me, and I tried to explain what was happening and how it happened to me with one of the dogs at the home. He suggested he scream me with a van so I could pass, which he did. He could tell how distraught I was, with tears streaming down my face, although I felt numb. The police later informed me that this is common with post-traumatic stress disorder. Now I would like, oh, I'm going to give the floor in a little bit to say what he saw. Then it was quiet for a while, besides sporadically hearing both dogs barking when I would pass and seeing them behind the house. On February 26, 2025, when I was coming up the hill almost to the house, the border collie was barking and circling tight to the back of the house. The shepherd was out in the driveway, and I have photos of this, which I'll send you guys. He was barking and almost out in the street. I did not dare to pass, as I did not think he was in the boundaries of an electric fence, nor did I see a shock collar on him, and I didn't want another bite. I snapped a couple of photos from a safe distance and called the Sherburne Police. They came and verified the dog was in a safe location and it was okay to pass. I told the officer what had occurred, that I didn't want to get closer, as if the dog came across the street and bit me, I could not deal with another bite. I showed him the photos, and then he reported to his superior, who came onto the scene. I heard his superior ask, was the dog on the property? And he replied, yes, based on photos. I sent the photos to Officer Laquedera and heard they were continuing to follow protocol. I reiterated, this is not a pain, must stop. I continued to hear barking as before when I would pass and saw them to the rear of the house sporadically. On April 31, 2025, I was coming up the hill from the soccer field toward 41 Perry, and luckily caught a glimpse of the border collie out in the street, all the way across the intersection of Perry, Prospect, and the Third Street, Dare Locker and Ort. Luckily, she did not see me. I filmed her in the street. At least two cars passed during that time, and luckily, did not hit her. A car was passing at one point, and I asked for their help, which you can hear on the video. It's something I would never do normally, but is a display of my post-traumatic stress disorder, which they ignored, the driver, and kept going. When the dog noticed me, I turned off the camera and rode as quickly as I could down the hill toward the soccer field as she started to come toward me. I called the police and waited there until they arrived and told me it was safe to pass. I saw no evidence of a shock collar on her from where I was, but both dogs have band-aids on, commonly, which obscures the view of a shock collar. And then, I say that was enough for me. And was when I asked, how can I escalate this for the safety of the dogs and all community members, including me? This led to the dangerous dog hearing we're having right now. I have seen the electric fence company at their house a couple of times since this incident, which is not new to me at this point and has not been affected in the past. I want to also mention two run-ins I've had with the owners, since they are the ones being relied on to remedy this situation on that question, that reliability. In the late summer, early fall of 2024, I saw the female owner was in her van with her young son and was driving toward the driveway exit. I stayed in the street and rode up to the driveway to speak with her, but was still in the street. She stopped the car and was looking up the street to her right for oncoming cars and didn't see me. She started to pull out as she was turning her head to the left and just stopped before hitting me when she saw me. She looked shaken. I motioned for her to roll down the window. She did, and I calmly and matter-of-factly said, "One of your dogs bit me. I'm a veterinarian, and I have not forgotten about it." She started to scream for her husband, I assume, backed up rapidly into the driveway, and I kept riding up the hill. I just wanted her to know that I do exist, I'm still riding by her house, give her the opportunity to apologize if she wanted to, and hope that she would be more responsible if her dogs actually seen the person. On April 30, 2025, at approximately 11:21 AM, I was riding up the hill by 41 Perry Street and saw the female owner and her young son near their car, I assumed getting ready to leave or loading the car, and the male owner was in the yard. He waved and he smiled. As I continued to ride, I calmly and politely said to him, "You're an irresponsible owner, and you will be held accountable." He angrily and loudly replied, "Can I say profanity in here, Dr. Si?"
If you feel that it is necessary?
I think it's necessary, Dr. Si. "You're a fucking bitch." I calmly replied, "I'm a vet, and I know what I'm talking about." He started to cross the yard toward the street and angrily replied, "You're a bitch. Why don't you come back here and get off that bike, and we'll talk about it. Hope you don't take a fall sometime on that bike." I calmly said, "You're despicable." To which he replied, "You're a cunt." I just kept riding up the hill and called the police immediately. I left voicemails for both Lieutenant Tedstone and Laquedara and remarks that I wanted them to know what happened in case something happened to me, as he had just threatened my life, and I wanted them to investigate him if any harm came to me. I was told someone would be sent over to talk to him, and that is the last I heard of it. I emailed Lieutenant Tedstone, who's been very kind about responding to me and helpful, I must say, and I greatly appreciate the police department, so I don't want anyone to think that I think ill of them. I have enormous amount of respect for them and the job they do. And I did ask him if, my husband's very worried about my safety after what that man said to me, and did not want me riding. And I didn't feel the same way. I'm going to ride my route, it's my right. And so, I had asked him on the phone, I had left in the message, is, do I need to not be riding around there, what's your advice? And he said, "I obviously can't tell you what to do on this, nor should I." Having said that, it seems that's a simple way to mitigate additional issues with the dog. And now, the owner would be to avoid the area when possible, as you mentioned, your husband stated. If it were me, I would simply pick another route to ride, but that's completely up to you. And then to that, I replied, "Thanks. That's the best-sell in Sherburne, and I'm not changing my route for someone who is violating the law. Thanks for all you guys do." So now, moving down here. As a veterinarian, I feel that the border collie has been set up for failure from the very beginning. It was in a position with the shepherd that should have been managed. It was bullied and dominated by the shepherd, and the owners allowed it to happen. This precipitated the attack on me. The border collie either did it as an act of transferred aggression, it really wanted to attack the shepherd, but I was the safest target. It did not try, or it did not try, it did not, oops, typo, something did it. It did, um, it did it in order to attempt to get the shepherds accepted, to one-up the shepherd, because border collies are really smart. Responsible owners would have responded to the situation that was so very clear in their yard and very audible as well, which they did not. This could have been fixed before it became a problem. Then the owners did not step up with regards to their responsibility on containing the dogs and keeping the dogs and the community members safe from additional entry. They also were risking a car accident by having the dogs in the street. In fact, one of the parents who carpools to our school through Sherburne reported dogs in this location and of this description out in the street, holding up traffic on her way through Sherburne via the route in December of 2024. It is also common knowledge that a dog that breaks the skin once will do it more severely the next time. Therefore, it is imperative to keep, at the least, the border collie contained physically, not just by an electric fence. If she must be outdoors, and I would advise the same for the shepherd. Sadly, but appropriately, I have had to put animals to sleep because they bit a human and broke the skin, could not be rehomed safely, or in a home with children. They could significantly injure and or kill. This family has a small child, and regardless of how sweet she is at home, this is a huge risk, and the family must be aware of that. As a veterinarian professional, I think the best thing for the border collie would be to rehome her to a loving home, where she is on a farm, can roam, and will not have the opportunity to be in a situation where she could bite another person. If this cannot be achieved, she and the shepherd, in my opinion, should be contained in a physical structure outdoors that is secured and will not permit any further occurrences. I would also recommend a board-certified behaviorist, not a trainer, a behaviorist consults on the case and sees if they can help make a better relationship between the two dogs. I am concerned that these owners have not stepped up to their responsibility as owners in general, and based on how they have conducted themselves with me, especially the male owner, I do not trust that they have the capability to do this. I also will need to look into a restraining order, unfortunately, based on the comments the male owner made to me. I am sorry I don't have the photos in a way that can be viewed. I will email them to you along with police reports once I am permitted to obtain them, if you haven't seen them already. As I said, I requested them via email from Lieutenant Tedstone on, on May 21, 2025, and again in person in the Sherburne Police Department, and via email on May 22, 2025. I was told by the undue police officer during my May 22 visit that the Sherburne Police Department had 10 days to respond to me to let me know the cost of getting the records. Then if I agreed to the cost, they would work on getting records. I did not, and do not feel that this could work. I also want to add that Susan Gergenti could not be here tonight, but she lives on Prospect Street, and she has allowed me to pass on that as a general rule, she has altered walking plans to avoid potential dog harassment at 41 Perry Street. She does so as there have been a few instances where she had felt physically threatened by the loose German shepherd. And finally, I want to close by saying this. This is not the dog's fault. These dogs are not to blame. The fault lies on the owners. This is their responsibility to detect behavioral issues, to address them, and most importantly, to keep the dogs that they own safe, safe from harm from vehicles, and also, keep the community safe. I have never I have never been in that yard. I have never crossed that property line. And these dogs came out after me. And I'm a veterinarian, and I devote my life to taking care of these animals. I do this with no time, no free time on my hands, believe me, with my twin 12-year-olds at home. I do this because I'm acting in the best interest of this community. We should be able to walk on our roads without fear. So, that's what I have to say. And I believe that somebody on Green Street, who was instrumental in helping me that day with his minivan, is going to say something as well. Thank you.
Before you leave, could I?
Yes.
Can I pass our police reports, 11 police reports?
Yeah.
When the animal control officer testifies,
Yeah.
I'll show them to him and ask me if those are the police reports. And if they are, I'll put them into evidence for you so that you have them.
Thank you so much, Mr. Gergensen. I really appreciate it.
All right, thank you. I do, before we move on, I do want to point out, and Chris Petrini, Town Council, is here. Please correct me if I'm wrong, but this hearing is restricted to the sort of actions and behaviors of the dogs and any remedies or determinations regarding the dogs. We are not here to consider words and actions that have occurred between two people. And if there are issues there that need to be taken up with law enforcement, you should take them up directly with law enforcement. So we are not here to consider any of those things. Also, some of your recommendations with regards to rehoming or, you know, behavior evaluations, those are outside of the scope of what we are allowed to recommend. So we are limited as to the numbers of things that we can recommend. And certainly, rehoming a dog is not one of the things that we can recommend or require, certainly. Is that accurate?
Yes.
Okay, is there anybody who would like to speak in support of the complainant?
I'm here, so go ahead. I'm supposed to go there?
Yes, please.
So my name is Vishwanath Ayar. I live in 52 Bingham. And I'm here in Sherburne for the past five, over five years or so. And so Alexandra told me at one of our recent gatherings of the library that there was a hearing to describe the incident that I was part of. And so I'm here for that. So on that particular day, I was going up the hill in my minivan. And what I saw was Alexandra on the bike, quite distraught, crying and asking loudly for help. And she was quite beside herself. And I saw the dog on the street, our dog on the street. And I had to stop, and I inquired with her if she's okay. She said, "No, I'm not. I've been bitten before." And she was describing between crying and... And so I figured that, okay, I can't just like drive off by going off to the side. So I asked if I could come in between her and the dog with my car, just stay there so that she can slowly... Because it's uphill, there's no way that she could have picked up any kind of pace to outrun the dog. And she was kind of, it felt like she was like, you know, frozen and just crying. So I slowly inch up so that I could be between the dog and the amber. And then I just stood there for a while, and then she slowly kept going up. I kept sort of going almost in parallel in sort of a screening way until she went further ahead. And then I just kept following her slowly. I made sure that the dog wasn't chasing or following her. And then once she was on the flat section of that road, a flat portion of that road, I then slowly came alongside her, asked her if she wanted me to continue riding just behind her or beside her. And she said, "No, she's fine." And I was still sort of going slowly on that road because it's narrow anyway, you have to be careful. So I kept going slowly, just checking on my rearview, everything was okay, seemed fine, and then I don't know.
Correct?
Thank you. Thanks. Am I allowed to leave because I have to go pick up? Or do I need to stay?
You can leave.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else who would like to speak in support of the complainants? All right, seeing none. Now, the dog owner, Mr. Barrows, would like to speak.
Good afternoon. I'm John Ray Barrows, 41 Perry Street. My wife and my daughter, she's five. I have two rehomed dogs, me and Pepper. They've been in Sherburne since they were born. The officers tell you they've had anywhere they used to live before. They were owned by a Airoson. Dogs are good dogs. Little she is, yes. Find a way on the fence occasionally. And I never had those types of dogs before. I've always had dogs, but I never had a border collie. And she finds a way to get up. She finds little spots in the fence that might, the shock went up near this strong thunder, and she goes for it. First time this happened, 2024. I did have the invisible fence right along outside my property, on my side of the property, not on the street. The dogs had the whole yard to walk around and do whatever they liked. The street that I live on is on the other end at an intersection where there's a lot of riders that come back. There's riders that go up and they go down. So it's constant. So the dogs do, like all dogs, they bark. At least they call a communication that they bark. So, you know, that did happen. They do bark when people go by. When we did have an incident, I spoke to the police. They suggested that I move my fence line back. So I did. I moved the fence line back to my backyard. It's 65 feet from the street now. So it's a decent amount from the street to the backyard now. And when this woman got bitten, the reason we didn't have the all the pit board and stuff we needed just got there with the dogs. Literally, I just picked them up. So their medical records, vet records were at the airport, and they were sent over. Everything was up to date. I just didn't have it, just. And we did exactly what we were recommended to do, was to keep her inside for 10 days. And we did that until both the dog and the person that was bitten didn't, I guess, even check for signs. We got a call that everything was fine, that we didn't have to do anything. State did come in, they checked the dogs so that they weren't mistreated, anything like that. So that was taken care of. Have they gotten out since? Yes, they have. We are taking steps to remediate that situation. So much so that to avoid any further situations, we are looking into getting a physical fence put into the backyard against what I'd like to do, or I'm gonna do it. It's already a risk to be done. I don't really think that it's appropriate that we should be letting members of the community dictate how you have your yard or do what you want to your house. I really don't think that's appropriate. I don't think that's a, it's a good way of living. These situations have occurred since I have a special permit for the house to have equipment behind the yard. 41 Perry's been used as a mixed-use property for 30, 40 years at this point. Never had a permitting in the past that was up to date. So last, about a year and a half ago, I got it in the works to get everything, you know, worked appropriately, cleaned up. I have everything documented. And this is where things have started to go in terms of... It's almost like a... Because I was allowed to take it by my special permit, this is a way of getting back almost at us for that situation. It's been documented. Police have come out. I've actually even offered, as the officers will tell you, I offer everybody. Straight shooter. Guys, anybody who's welcome to the house. Come, the dogs will lay down. They'll turn over, you can play with them. Have them do whatever you want. And they don't mind. And their officers will tell you that they... They come to the house to do the checks. Me and will roll over and show them your rubber belly. They're not vicious dogs. They're not meat dogs by any sort of imagination at that point. We are going to be doing a couple of different things at the house. That way, there's not going to be any interpretation that might be misused. We will be putting in, I have visual, I have cameras around the house as well. That's audio is going to be installed so we can hear, so I can record exactly what people do or don't say when they drive by the house or when they arrive by the house. There has been... This woman again, my wife, which she almost did get into a car accident because of... And because we didn't have that installed, there's no way I can prove it. I've never called the officers because I'm more of the let things go. Might have been a bad day for her. She might have still been upset. Whatever the case may be, just let it go. So I don't call for every instance. I try to mind my own business, so much so that you guys will never see me here for any reason at all, you know, that has to do with us leaving our property and going, causing harm or disruption to anybody else on their property. I go to work, I come home, that's it. I don't bother anybody. And that being said, I kind of like that perspective to be mutual, where if I'm at home, I'd like not to be bothered as well. And I'm sure that you all feel the same way when you guys are in your own property at your own homes, right? But that is something that you guys have the right that you would like to have. So the things that we are going to be doing is, the fence is going to be put up in the backyard. Right? And it's actually going to come down to how my wife wants the yard to look. So she's going to design how she wants the fence to be put up. And we will be doing that. We also will be putting in the visual and audio recordings for that, right? And for when we are not home. And then I still do have a line in my front yard, runs right across the front yard, that the dogs do not go out if I'm in the yard. They stay somewhere around where I am. And your officers will tell you, they won't go past it, especially if we're outside. So I don't plan on taking it out. I'm leaving it there. You know, if you do have all the receipts for the invisible fence, they've turned up the collars, they've adjusted the lines. They've done everything that needs to be done in terms of, you know, making sure that that system works and is efficient. So between the invisible fence and the visible fence, it will be enough. I believe that it's going to be more than enough to make sure that the dogs don't get out anymore. In terms of the incident where this woman was bitten, if you can tell, she is a person who has some strong feelings towards the subject. And she speaks very eloquently. She describes what happened and her feelings and her her experiences as a vet well. And that's described very well here. It is a completely different situation when you're in front of my house. And, you know, it's hard to sit here and hear the things that that I'm hearing and know that it's it's being over embellished a little bit. Not saying that she's lying. I'm not saying that things didn't happen because they did. I'm not saying that I didn't make mistakes in terms of how the dogs were kept, because I have. And I've taken steps to make sure that they get remediated. So, you know, I believe that for our section, our point, I've done everything, I've complied with the officers. I came into the meeting this past week. Right, we sat down and tried to work this out before coming to a hearing. Unfortunately, she declined to come to try to resolve it in a non-meeting sort of, you know, in front of the board. She refused to do it. I attended. I've actually attended everything that has ever, you know, ever been asked of me. You know, if there's, police officers asked to, you know, have somebody come to the house, they always come, they're welcome. They've checked all the dogs. They've sent the state out, states come out, they've kept. We've moved the lines from the street to the backyard upon a recommendation to keep the dogs further away from the street. And we did that, right, as a form of a good gesture, good faith from my part. So we have been more than willing to work with them, work with you guys, with whatever you guys decide. You know, I'm willing to do. I just don't think that that it's as... How should I put this? I don't think that the way that we were depicted is correct. We were depicted as, you know, homeowners who don't care about, I guess, children or families or anyone of that nature. And it's complete shit. It's actually kind of hard not to get frustrated when you hear something like that, especially being a parent. I don't have a boy, I don't know. You do get a little bit defensive. And, you know, that's... And, you know, that's that's what I have to say, right? If you guys need to speak to any of the other neighbors, more than welcome to. Because there's only four on the street, right? So you don't have that many neighbors to go to. But, you know, it's it's part of the reason that I bought the property where I did. There's not a ton of traffic, uh, traffic there. It's a little bit more setback, secluded. So that's what, you know, I came to tell you guys, I'm willing to do whatever you need. You know, try to work this out in a manner that's that's favorable for for you and I. I'm sorry you got bit. I really am. I don't want my dogs to bite anybody. That's actually the complete opposite way that they're raised.
Thank you.
And obviously, if you guys have any questions, if you need anything.
And is there anybody else who would like to speak in support of the dog owner or the dogs themselves?
Yes.
Just a thought that the way I usually handle a dog hearings is I allow any rebuttal that any party might want to make to any other parties' statements.
Okay.
I might suggest that you allow.
Okay.
That before you go on to the.
Would you like to rebut any of Mr. Barris' statements?
Me? I really appreciate his apology. I love animals, I think his shepherd's gorgeous, and I think the Border Collie is a beautiful dog too. But I cannot ignore what happened. And I really am doing this again in the best interest of the community. And I've never said anything beyond what I brought forward at this hearing. And I've never said it in an angry way to either you or your wife. And I apologize, I didn't know that your child was was a male. I mean, a female, because I've never gotten that close. I've never crossed your property line, I've never made any threats. I certainly did want to come and talk to you guys about the dogs in a calm, professional manner as a veterinarian. But I was afraid to do that because I thought that if I came across that property line, they'd go after me. So that's why I never did. But believe me, I would have loved to have had the opportunity to do that because I would have brought it to you. I just didn't have that opportunity. And the only route available to me was going through the city. So thank you for your apology, I heard it, and I do forgive you. But I still think we need to do something proper with the dogs. And I appreciate that you're talking about a fence because I think that's appropriate. And the other thing that bothers me a little bit is, I know what you're talking about, that they moved the fence back because the Border Collie especially was circling very tight, but the shepherd was out. And the shepherd was all the way, I have pictures of it, all the way where the driveway hits the pavement. And to me, I think that's beyond the fence line. So I just don't think that from what I'm seeing logically, the dots taking care of it. But I understand where you're coming from about wanting your yard to be beautiful, and it is beautiful. But I think to keep everything safe, because the Border Collie is a Border Collie, and she's mischievous, as you said, they're very smart, they're doers, that's what they do, they're busy animals. And the shepherd has come out in the street, and I had to be screened by my neighbor to get by. So I understand they're super nice, but for some reason, when you're in the street and you're passing by there on your bike and you're a sitting duck going at a snail's pace up that hill, they're hungry and they go for you. And so it's just, it's the reality of it. It doesn't mean they're bad animals, it just means they've been triggered, and that's it.
Thank you. Mr. Barris, do you have any comments after that?
Um, the only comment I have is that actually this is not the first opportunity. This is the second. The first was last week, where we could have handled this outside of this hearing. So it's take it for what it is. And that's all.
Thank you. And now can I ask the town's animal control officer, Lieutenant, Lieutenant Stone, to give us your report and any recommendations that you might have for the select board to consider?
Sure. Good evening, my name is Luke Tedstone, I'm a lieutenant in the police department. Over the past approximately thirteen months, there have been approximately eleven calls relating to the dogs and involved parties at the property. Some of the calls were due to simply barking in the yard, one or both of the dogs leaving the yard and entering the street, a bite to a cyclist on one occasion, and a brutal confrontation between the cyclist and the resident which was not dog related. Results of the calls have consisted of documenting the calls, addressing and confirming issues, an unfounded disposition or investigated and or confirmed disposition. There have been town bylaw issues issued based on violations as mentioned by both parties tonight. I'd just like to say that dogs leaving their property is certainly not an anomaly in this town. It's a fairly regular occurrence. We receive, we frequently respond to calls involving dogs running loose, dogs running in the roadway, random dogs in certain areas or other people's yards. There is a control law in town, we're all aware of that. The dogs are required to be under full control, their owner or handler, which consists of immediate or effective voice control. I feel strongly that dogs should remain under control or on their property and should not scare or intimidate pedestrian cyclists or anyone else using the roadway. As discussed and mentioned, there have been several complaints involving Mr. Barris' dog. I have used the dogs many times based on interactions with the prior owner and complaints involving Mr. Barris' dog. I have not experienced significant issues with the dogs. They are frequently very vocal. However, if you get near them, they they roll over and they want to drop a stick at your foot, or they want to play with you. That's been my experience as well as the experience of several officers that have talked to me about this ongoing issue. During calls and investigations, as Mr. Barris said, he's taking accountability for all issues and explained to us that he's been attempting steps to mitigate future issues. As he said, he's moved the fence line. We talked recently, I recommended that he consider fencing, and he was amenable to that. I also spoke with him about a behavioral consult through MSPCA, so Behavioral Services. So he was also receptive to that. I think that there have been a lot of issues with the dogs. I think there have been issues as I think both parties have indicated that Border Collies are crafty and they look for a job. Some of them are hurting jobs, some of them are trying to get through a fence and do other things. So there's certainly a problem. The issues when we've brought them up have been addressed and handled. Again, Mr. Barris has been receptive and has done more than what we've asked in in terms of what we can ask for. So I obviously would like to see this stop. I, as I indicated earlier, I don't think every dog should be running out in the streets intimidating or biting anyone. I think there's no excuse for that. I think the fencing would be a great option. And I think a behaviorist would be a good option from a neutral party to say the dogs are or are not dangerous. So those are some of my suggestions. I don't know if anyone has any questions or wants me to elaborate on anything.
Okay. In our packet, there was all these police reports. And I'd like to show them to you, see if these are the police department's reports. And if so, give a copy to the complaining party because she's been voicing concern that she hasn't got these documents.
Sure, if I could just speak to the require or the request for public records. We have up to ten days to respond with a good faith estimate. There's an extensive amount of information that we're going to need to go through. She doesn't just want written reports, she wants phone calls and other information. I have no, I I cannot say whether or not that can be released to her as of an official record. So I mean, I can certainly identify that as something we've produced, but as a records access officer, we're working on the request. I've been on vacation, I'm actually not officially back till tomorrow. So whatever you want me to do, I will look at, but I just don't know about producing records.
These have been in the packet, which I assume then have been made public. So there's not, nothing in these documents that from my read of it would be redacted. There aren't any transcripts of any phone calls. Let me show you what I've got. I'm just trying to make the handwriting out of its mind.
I mean, there are missing items here, but there are also information that I've provided to the board as reported by us as a police department.
So I'd like to have these marked as exhibits in the case, and could you give them to me? Also, I need a copy for Jessica.
Is that it? Any other questions or need me for anything?
All right, ask a question.
Oh, sorry.
All right, in one of those reports, I noticed that, I I don't have it in front of me right now, either you recommended or Mr. Barris agreed that a wooden physical fence should be put up for those dogs.
My wife wants a black aluminum fence.
I didn't, could you speak up?
My wife wants a black aluminum fence. I had stated that we were going to get a wood fence.
Right.
Right, I got outvoted.
Okay, of course, the kind of fence isn't important. It's a fence that would physically keep the dogs in.
So yes, we're going to be putting in a, she's just picking out a style that she likes.
Yeah, okay, that's good.
But yeah, it's black aluminum, like six inch spaces between each section.
I asked about it just because it seems to me that the crux of the situation here is not, you know, whether whether you're upset or whether you're trying to do the right thing, but that the dogs need a physical barrier. I mean, we, any of us who have experience with invisible fences know that some dogs get through, you know, no matter what. And
So I was going to do both.
Right.
Systems, right? I'm going to be putting the fence behind where the the invisible fence is. So if the invisible fence would be in front of the fence, so for them, even if they get to the fence, they get shot by an invisible fence before they would even have access to it. So almost like a double layer of protection, I guess you would.
Right.
Yeah, you'd say, from
It sounds like the complainant would be satisfied if there were a physical barrier. And so that people could walk or ride by and know that the dogs really can't get through. And I think that's all that's being asked here, right? Aside from all the the other.
Well, yes, you know, that that was one of the requests. Some complaints have been because of barking, right? And I can't control dogs barking. I don't think anybody really can, right? Unless you're simply shocking them, and I'm not really a fan of doing that either. You know, and the other complaints that have been filed, some of them are not going to be discussed here. So we'll discuss the appropriate venue. But I think that that would mitigate the situation. Like I said, I was willing to do this even outside of this hearing. It wasn't, this wasn't
I know you're You have not only the street, but you actually have some public trail under the power lines that people sometimes hike on.
So they do, not that they can't. I don't believe that's public, I believe that's private. Because that section there is also the aquifer for the town on top of that hill.
The aqueduct, no. The aqueduct is further up, away from the, away from the power line.
Because when we were putting in our septic, that was a big consideration of where it could be, the distances. And that's, that's what came up moving here was that that wasn't actually a public way or anything, that that's all private. The way, yeah, people do walk up and down that area. And it's pretty common, you know, kids ride dirt bikes and.
Right, well, I bring it up just because, you know, you don't want anybody to get embarrassed.
Of course, of course, but yeah, that's, that's actually.
When you have your fence situation, I bear that in mind, there's that one side.
Yeah, we do, you know, I'm going to be fencing the back dwelling in case. Yeah, the entire area of of the yard.
Yeah, that would be good because you have Merchant Street and the soccer fields, right?
Oh, yeah, all, all, all right, that's a lot, right?
Right. So is there, is there a, a time in which these fence, this fence should be put up? I mean, I'm not sure if that's something for us to decide to ask.
Yeah, we, I came into the meeting, I believe it was two weeks ago? Right about two weeks. And I had brought it up to my wife and I said, I was thinking about doing a wood fence. And she said she wanted an aluminum fence, and she picked something up that she liked. And we were going to be putting it in summer sometime, probably in the next few weeks, soon she picks out and can order something. You know, and then I did speak to the to the officers and if you're going to get the the phone call transcript, right? I told them as soon as, as soon as we decided we'll put them in. That was something that I was willing to do even prior, right? I just don't like the fact that somebody says you have to do, somebody that doesn't, it's that far. Right, so.
Oh, you had a comment, sorry.
I was just saying that.
Well, that's really a question.
We haven't reached that step of the hearing yet.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, you're jumping a little bit. That's okay. Yes, Alex.
I just clear the air on one thing, and that's this meeting. So I just want to let you know that what I understood from the email from Luna and Tedstone was this meeting was to discuss the proceeding, how this meeting works. I had no idea that that was supposed to be some negotiation meeting between us. That was not made clear to me. So the reason I did said I don't need that meeting is because I don't have the time carved out to do something like that. And I thought it was just to discuss this process. So I want you to know that I didn't skip out on a meeting for negotiation, okay? Just so you're aware, because no bad blood, all right?
All right, thank you. Any other questions for Lieutenant Tedstone? All right, no. So now the final step prior to any select board deliberation is I am to ask the complainant what action she would like the select board to take and then ask the dog owner if he finds that requested action acceptable, or if not, then what he would find acceptable. So what do you have a request for what you think that the select board should do?
Can I just sit? Dr. Seif, should I get up?
You can, you can stay seated.
Okay.
Because there's, there's not a real microphone up there, the room mic. The thing in the middle, this is the actual room mic.
Okay, so I, just like you were, you were saying, Mr. Nutra, I think that really what I'm after is a fence, a fence that's high enough and close enough, as you were hinting at with what you said. Because I appreciate the electric fence being there too as a backup, that's outstanding. But I, from what I've seen, they don't care about the electric fence, but maybe you really cranked it. But, you know, the, the, a fence that's high enough, and we need to agree on what it is. My mom always did eight feet, but again, I don't know. You guys can can hash that out. And then And then, close enough to where the dogs can't get out and being expected to be in that when they're outside. That to me, unless it's like midnight and nobody's biking by or something like that. So to me, that's what I think would be reasonable. I also, you don't have to do this, but I'm just gonna throw it out there. I'd love to see you talk to a behaviorist, a board certified one, like Lieutenant Tedstone was saying, because I think it can make the relationship between these dogs better. Because the shepherd is alpha clearly, but a little bit abusive. So I'm just, I'm throwing that out there, you do with it what you want. With the barking, the barking doesn't bother me. But something you might wanna try, if you haven't tried, is a citronella collar because it doesn't shock them, just citronella out. They don't like the smell of it, they stop barking. So it may not work, but it might be something you might wanna explore if people are complaining about the barking. But the fence is really the key. And doing it in a certain amount of time, like you were hinting at. Because, you know, it's, I don't like deadlines either, I hate it. I know how it works with contractors, you never know when it's going up. But I think it would be reasonable to set some type of a timeline that we can aim to follow so that we can all feel better about the situation. And keeping the dogs secure until that timeline expires.
Mr. Barrows, are those recommendations that she made, are those acceptable to you or is there something else that you would...
So I'm not gonna put in an eight foot fence. It's a bit much, or the citronella collar. If you guys know the area, we've got a ton of coyotes. There's wildlife that goes by. And I actually like to have the dogs park. It keeps some of the wildlife where it's supposed to be, which is in the woods and not in my yard. Unfortunately, that's my point of view on that. I'm a, I'll do a fence, right? But I don't think that putting up a massive structure is the solution. I think that we can come to something that's gonna be both visually appealing and functional, especially because there's gonna be two boundaries to this approach, right? That'll be sufficient and aesthetically pleasing. Because if you guys know the area, that was a terrible location before. And I tried to make it nicer to look at, so much so that you have riders going up and down the street, right? It's, it became nice. So my plan is to try to keep moving in that direction and not kinda go the opposite. But in terms of timeframe, everyone knows that I have, I'm a contractor, I have employees. So picking, actually installing the fence would not be an issue. It's just however long it takes to come in. And we'll put it in. So I don't foresee that being an issue whatsoever. In terms of keeping the dogs confined until that, I don't think that's an option. And I'm willing to... To a reasonable reason. Because if it does take three weeks for the fence to come in, I don't believe that the dogs should be confined to us. My house isn't very large, right? So I don't think that a big dog should be put inside for that many hours at a time where they can't really run around and have fun. Even if they're walked, they don't get enough exercise. So I can put maybe stringers up so they run on a line back and forth. In the meantime, you know, I'll do something like that. But I don't think that leaving two larger dogs inside is the best option. But whatever you guys decide, I'm willing to do.
Thank you. Did you have something, Chris? All right, does anybody else have, other than the select board, have anything else that they would like to say before I close the public portion of the hearing? All right, seeing none, then this closes the public portion of the hearing and now the select board will deliberate and decide whether to take any actions. And just to be clear, the three primary actions that we can take here are either we can dismiss the complaint, we can deem one or both of the dogs nuisance dogs. And if so, we have the option to require some action to be taken. Or we can deem one or both dogs to be dangerous dogs, in which case we are required to tell the owners to take certain actions from a list that, I'm not gonna go through the list until, until and unless we determine that one or both dogs is dangerous.
If I could...
Go ahead.
Just wanna make it clear with what you just said, there's really two separate steps here. The first is dismiss a nuisance dog or a dangerous dog. That's separate from the remedies.
Yes.
Considering which of the three categories you wanna be in, you should all know that if it's a nuisance dog, you're pretty much wide open to do whatever's necessary to ameliorate the problem. You have much more flexibility. If you determine that the dog is dangerous, you have to use one or more items from the list. And that list can be serious. The relief that's being requested by the complaining party generally can be done with a finding of nuisance dog. It can also be done with a dismissal if there's a contract or agreement between the parties. But it doesn't seem like this, there is that piece of it. So I would suggest that it's the best category for this situation. Given the request, would be to treat this as a nuisance dog. So I would make that motion that we find both dogs, because apparently the shepherd was out and the border collar was out, to be nuisance dogs.
All right. Go ahead.
All right, I get your point. In a way, that feels more flexible, it feels like an easier solution. The fact, if a dog is chasing and barking, I would call that a nuisance. Once he's bitten someone, it's maybe a little more than a nuisance. And I don't know whether that gets us into a much more complicated situation than we think it's appropriate here. But I know other people are afraid of those dogs when they go by. We've heard from others outside of this hearing. But no one's been hurt. So it's just the one bite that actually occurred. There is a certain danger to being chased by a dog if you're on a bicycle or especially on a horse. And being a horse rider and a bike rider, I'm very aware that I'm really vulnerable on a horse. And I don't know of any incident that's occurred. I know people do ride by there occasionally from the... But...
Yeah, there's actually a bunch of horses that come, they actually come into the driveway from the Sable, Framingham, right across from the soccer field. Because my daughter rides and they come to say hi. So they're friendly. The dogs have been there while the horses are there. We've never had any issues.
Well, I'm glad to hear that.
Yeah, so we've never had any issues specific to anything besides riders.
Right.
Riding is the catalyst of the issue. And I believe it's because, and it's not, I don't believe it was her, but I believe it was, there's a lot of kids that come up and down the street. And because the line used to be right on the street, like five feet off, so, but my grass goes right to the street, so there wasn't much space. People would got, the kids would, the dogs would bark, kids would antagonize, right? And then she happened to be, unfortunately, the one that me kinda took it out on. You know?
Right.
So in terms of your worry with animals, in terms of horses, there's been multiple opportunities for them to do things. And the horses being within the electrical fence area and them not doing anything.
And people walk dogs along there as well.
So they do, yeah, so they do. My neighbor's directly across the street. The Snows, they used to have two Goldens. They used to come across the street as well. They've passed. But they used to come into the yard, right? Go back into their yard, play with the dogs.
Right.
It's never been, that's never been an issue.
Yeah, so as Lieutenant Tedstone says, their dog's out all over the place in Sherburne. It's not unusual, but it sounds as if the remedy that we're pointing toward here, basically a physical fence, would let everyone relax and it would be covered by a nuisance dog decision.
Yes.
Are we allowed to ask a question, though, of one of the people that's going?
Yeah, sure.
Would that be appropriate?
Yeah, go ahead.
So I would like to ask the dog owner, are the dogs ever outside when there's no one at home?
So the answer's no. Always somebody there. My wife is, stays at home. And I actually have an employee that works at the yard. I'm permitted, one employee, that actually works in the yard full time. So Monday through Saturday, they're there. When we're not, I'm always out and about. But, you know, in the evenings, there's always people home. They're usually not out, only to go to the restroom and we put them back in.
So if that's the case, were they not there to witness the biting incident?
So this is the thing, when the incident happened, it was on the street. And if, I'm not sure if you're familiar with Perry?
I know it, but I mean, someone would have heard the incident, I would think, even if they weren't close to it.
Not necessarily. So if you're anywhere on the street and coming around, there's a lot of traffic that goes by that area. People that are cutting through from Framingham to get into Sherburne, depending where they're going. And there's just, there's a lot of cut-throughs that go in that area. If you're in my backyard, you can't hear the street, depending what happens. And it's not so much that it wasn't loud or you can't hear somebody if they, if they, they would have to really scream for you to be able to hear them. It's not like a, like you have great audio from that location.
I didn't say it, but if someone got bitten, I think that might be a different situation.
Okay.
So the best thing I can tell you is that if you guys wanted to send somebody out on any random weekend and you stand right in the cul-de-sac in the middle, you would be able to tell how much noise there is because there's 300 cars that park in that soccer field and the constant traffic back on those roads.
I coached soccer for 16 years, my friend.
Yeah, so...
I have no more questions.
Can I answer that too?
No.
No, again?
I'm gonna direct the question to you.
Go ahead.
Any other comments? Yes, Dan?
Just a question, how tall is the fence here contemplating?
I believe she picked, I think it's four or five feet. So, yeah, it would be a sizable fence. I just don't think that eight feet where it actually towers over the height of someone is necessary, especially because I live on a hill. So if you look at it, eight feet visually, it would look like it's a 12 to 14 foot fence visually.
So if you go into making this a dangerous dog, you have to have a confined area that has a roof, a chain link fence roof and all of that stuff. But if you stay in the, as a nuisance dog, you can set the height of the fence.
Yeah.
And on the issue of the height of the fence, six feet is really what you need. And I say that because I have a fair number of animals at my place and I've seen surprising agility of, like a coyote can almost sail at great heights. So you've got these dogs escaping, four feet is not enough. But this is the issue that only arises if we find a negligent dog. If you decide to dismiss this, then it's the end of the conversation. So that's why I made the motion for a negligent dog.
Nuisance dog.
We set the predicate so that we could have a discussion about something like a fence size. The other reason why I made the motion for a nuisance dog is because I like the idea of a behavioralist. And a nuisance dog allows us to do that, to impose some requirement on that. Whereas a dangerous dog, the things they're talking about surgically altering the dog and putting microchips on the dog and all that kinda stuff is a whole different order of magnitude.
So let me ask a question of Paul, is that all right?
Yeah.
Because there's two dogs involved there. Only one of them actually was the one that bit the victim. So do we need to decide separately for each of the two dogs? Is there possibly a dismissal against one dog and a nuisance dog for a different dog? Or how do you handle the two?
Well, I include both in part from my own experience with these kinds of cases that it's actually the interaction between the two dogs that causes the situation.
Okay.
Right, each dog by themselves, if they were separate, often behave differently than when you have two dogs together. And here there was testimony that one dog was sitting on top of the other dog.
Yeah, that's fine, I just wanna clarify.
So the motion was to declare both to be nuisance dogs.
And if we declare them nuisance dogs, then do we then specify this solution?
That would be the second step.
In the next...
Yeah, it would be a separate motion.
Okay, so I would second Paul's motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second to declare both dogs nuisance dogs. Any other discussion before voting?
Is it too late for a public question?
Technically, yes, but I'll allow it.
I'm just wondering, because as a dog owner and as a dog owner who has had an issue or two in the past, this whole proceeding makes me a little nervous as a resident of Pam Duff's Hundred Rooming Street, sorry. I know we've had other dog bites in town where we're not sitting here, whether, trying to determine whether a dog is a nuisance dog or a dangerous dog. And it seems to me, I don't really know either one of you very well, but we all live in Sherburne and we wanna do what's right for everybody. You guys on the board are gonna be setting a precedence right now, which is, makes me very uncomfortable. This gentleman seems like he is doing everything that is being asked of him even before this meeting. And time constraints, how tall is this fence gonna be? Like, maybe from those three weeks that the fence is being made, you could go an alternate route until the fence is up. Like, all the concessions seem to be coming from over here and I get it, it's because he owns the dog. But there's been other dog bites in town where we're not sitting here having this conversation and dogs that have bitten, maybe more than once. So I just need you guys to be aware that as a dog owner, it's quite... So I just need you guys to be aware that as a dog owner, it's quite upsetting to hear that you're willing to call somebody a nuisance when it's a border collie who, like, they're known to go and chase and, yeah, the heels or whatever and it got, it got out of the fence, but he's remedying the situation. So, I, I don't know, it seems like it's escalated to someplace where it doesn't really need to be. And they're gonna be setting very dangerous precedents.
Can I, um?
Um, I'll respond to that. So I hear where you're coming from and ultimately, I believe you that there have been bite incidents in town. But at the end of the day, it is up to the, uh, people who have been bitten to choose whether or not to escalate the issue to a hearing like this, and it is fully their right to do so, and it is fully their right to choose not to do so. Once it gets to this level, we need to actually hear the facts and make a determination. These dogs have escaped the property and one of them has credibly bit a member of the public. And so I don't believe that, um, morally, we can ignore that. If the person who was bit chooses not to do so, again, that is their prerogative and it's not up to this board to go chase them down and say, "You have to escalate this to a, a, a hearing so that we can deem this particular dog nuisance or dangerous." Um, but it is within the public's right to do so. And once it is up here, I think that it is our duty to hear the facts of the case. You know, if it were not the case that, um, the dog had, had, uh, bit Ms. Frank or that, uh, you know, it could be, you know, determined that she was provoking a dog in some way. You know, that's one of the, one of the, the criteria in the hearing, you know, the, in the, in the general law that says, you know, if you're provoking the dog and the dog bites you, that's not really, that's not the dog's fault, you know? So in the absence of those types of facts, the fact remains that these dogs have escaped. One of them at least has definitely bit a member of the public. And we need to take that seriously because we're here to protect the, the safety of the public. I think that, um, deeming a dog a nuisance so that we can require a fence be put up, to me, it does set a precedent. I don't know that it is necessarily a dangerous precedent. I think if there are many dogs in town that are escaping and biting people, it's not unreasonable to say that those dogs probably should be confined inside a fenced-in yard. That seems reasonable to me.
I could just add to that, that I've had dog hearings here in Sherburne before. This is not my first dog hearing. There have been o- other people who've come forward, not frequently, because as a community-
Yeah, no, I know of one other too, since I've been here, yeah.
As a community, we do try to work together with people. And the, the dog owners, I'm a dog owner myself. And the dog owners and the persons who are subject to things do tend to work things out themselves. But when the question was asked, do they reach, had agreement, that they were not in agreement. And we gotta be mindful of the fact that whatever we do here, either these parties have the right to go to district court and pursue this in a lot aggressive way, much for, so we have, it's part of a, a whole system, regulatory system and we are part.
Yes, so just to, um, say a little bit about my thinking. So, you know, I understand that we have two steps. One is the determination of the, the nature of the, of the dogs as, as per Paul's motion. Uh, and then the second being the remedy. But given the conversation, it seems like the remedy is the fence. And so I think my thinking is that Paul's motion, nuisance dog motion, gets us there. There wasn't quite an agreement between Ms. Frank and Mr. Barrows, so it wasn't quite, they've worked it all out. So it seemed like Paul's motion would get us to what to me seems like a sensible, sensible solution. Protect the public, um, in a, you know, in a way that would, you know, take care of things going forward as, you know, per what you had offered to, to do.
Amendment about that.
Yep.
That I, I've had situations where property owners agree on things and everything is fine, and then it doesn't get done.
Well, that's the reason for doing an emotion.
So when you have-
Yeah.
I- if there's, even if there's agreement on a, on a, on a fence, we wanna make sure the fence gets built. And so the property owner, so we set a time period, say we say X period of time. The end of X period of time, if there's still no fence there, the, the property owner is on vacation in the Caribbean under a palm tree and somebody's getting bitten, they have, they have, they, this is fixed.
Yeah, yeah.
It's, it's a right.
Yeah, I get that.
Otherwise, it's just a promise.
Right. And that seems like just the reason for, to support your, your motion. I mean, I completely agree with that.
Alright, we have a motion and a second on the table. Are we ready to vote? I wanna take a roll call vote. Uh, Marion?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
I'm also aye. Uh, so the motion carries, so, uh, your dogs are both now deemed nuisance dogs. Um, so now we discuss, uh, what remedy we are going to, uh, require, if any.
So could I take a shot at that, you know, subject to amendment and whatever? One is that if a, a fence be installed of a height that would be sufficient to contain these dogs, I don't know the size of the dogs, but I know we have a veterinarian on the board who might have a sense of, uh, what would be a good, uh, fence height. Or if not, I can ask the animal control officer what he thinks is a good fence height. My own instinct is six feet is pretty good to keep an animal confined. Uh, I'm also mindful of the fact that dogs have been known to dig under the fence and get out. And so there are sometimes the requirement that there actually be, uh, fences dug into the ground in a way that you're not gonna have digging out. I'm not suggesting that here, uh, but I'm throwing out six-foot fence. I'm suggesting also the idea of this, uh, behavioralist consultation be undertaken. Because I think it would benefit the property owner and the dog owner and, and the, the, uh, complaining party. Because as, as was said, oftentimes the, the misbehavior of the dogs is a function of the owner. And in this case, I think we heard testimony that the misbehavior of the dogs is a function of the two dogs the way they're relating to each other. And maybe if there was a better relationship between the two dogs and some attention to the behavior of the dogs, that that would longer term provide for better health for the dogs. And the, the third thing I'm concerned with is some protection for the property owner during the period of time that the fence is not there. And so let's say we, we pick a time period that the fence has to be installed within, um, sixty days. Um, that's a pretty long period of time. Now, I know we can do it shorter, I, I've got miles and miles of fence, and if I wanna put a fence up, I can get it done the next morning. Uh, and I've got Cruz standing by to do it. He says he has an employee, one employee can put up a fence. But if you give him sixty days, during that sixty-day period, the public's at risk because the animals aren't, aren't confined in any way. And so there was an objection to keeping them in the house. But if you leave them outside, then the situation remains the same. So I think there has to be something done on a provisional basis till, till the fence is installed. And that also will give the property owner a great incentive to get the fence built quickly. Cause as soon as the fence is built, then they, they don't like need to be confined. So I would throw in as a third condition, that the fence, that, that the animals be confined in enclosures or in the house until the fence is installed.
Well, actually, I was gonna qualify that, cause the owner, cause my mother had this, had a run where the dogs are actually on a leash, but it's connected to a wire that runs between two trees. So they're still allowed to be outside, but they're constrained by having, uh, uh, not a rope, but really a leash or a neck with a collar that, it's like a runner goes along the wire.
There's just a, a section in the statute that says, and, and, and maybe a run doesn't comply, that isn't an issue. And it says that, that, uh, it cannot be confined to any, any inanimate object, um.
Yeah, to be honest, I don't like that solution, mostly, mostly actually for the safety of your dog. If they have a collar or leash and they're attached to some inanimate object and there isn't direct, you know, visual supervision, they can choke themselves. Uh, so I don't, I, uh-
They don't have, they have the collar, uh, for the electric fence around them, but they have the, um, the most explosive vest that, uh, goes under their belly and it wraps around all four, uh, I guess you'd call it a vest or-
Harness.
Harness, yeah. Uh, and then it clips onto the center of their, um, like their spine, almost, like up here, um, that they wear. They don't, I don't do the, the collar because it, uh, gets fat, so, um, if you, if you choke it-
Yeah.
Right, so I think that's-
Okay.
And the other thing I wanted to ask you was, uh, uh, not that I have any issues with what you're saying, um, if, by any, my dogs are nine, right? Uh, so at some point, it's gonna, I might not have those dogs. Is this, uh, stipulation that you guys are putting in of the fence specifically for them or any dog on the property?
It's just for these dogs.
So once, if I don't have them anymore, I can take the fence down?
Yeah.
Right? And is, will there be a, um, what, what would be the process for that? I just don't want to put myself in a situation where if I wanna make any changes to, to the property, I'm confined to what you guys are deciding to do.
I don't know, once, once the dogs are no longer in your possession, for whatever reason, then you can take the fence down.
Okay.
Um, so I have a couple of questions for the room, I suppose. But, you know, perhaps Lieutenant Tedstone and, um, perhaps, um, town council, uh, is, one, do you have any feeling for what an adequate height fence would be for these two dogs? I haven't met the, I mean, I am familiar with border collies and German shepherds, but I have not met these dogs specifically. Um, so I don't know if you have any, any recommendations for height of fence?
Yeah, I did, I mean, he just brought up the nine years of age, that was gonna be one of my questions. What's their age, what's their agility level? Have they ever been around a fence before? And if so, what height? And have there been any issues with the dogs getting over or under the existing fence? So that would kinda give us a benchmark on where to start. I mean, I know nine-year-old dogs that can scare a scale an eight-foot fence. I also know a nine-year-old dog that will need help to get up a step. So border collies and shepherds, I remember them being pretty energetic and pretty agile. Uh, I don't, I, I guess I don't know, like, I don't wanna say a four-foot fence if, you know, Mia or the, the non-large one, I guess we'll say, not the word you used, uh, can, can jump over a four-foot fence. So I mean, it would depend on their agility level and, and past experience with fencing for them. Would be my feedback.
Yeah. Yeah, just to add a, a little more information for the discussion on the fence height. Uh, Sherburne zoning bylaws, anything over a six-foot tall fence would require some setbacks from the property lines. Yeah, there may be some zoning questions for tall fences.
Yeah, I certainly, I don't think I would recommend more than a six-foot fence. And I'm just trying to decide whether even a six-foot fence is excessive. The other question would be, uh, if it were to come to pass that we said, okay, let's make it a five-foot fence. And so then Mr. Barrows, you know, puts in a five-foot fence. And it turns out that actually one or both dogs is able to clear the fence by jumping it. Uh, so then that remedy was obviously inadequate. Could we as the board essentially alter that, uh, requirement without going through another hearing?
You, you probably would have to notice another hearing. We could recite in the decision that, um, you, you felt as, the board's determined that a five-foot fence would be applicable. Um, and then, you know, I guess we could potentially put in there, the board could put in that, that if there is an incident, that in the opinion of the animal control officer in the board, we require that the fence height be increased. And then someone would have to appeal that, but thinking aloud, maybe it would be okay to draft it in the decision that way, so.
Better off just send six feet.
Oh, yeah, on the fence height issue, uh, we're kind of shooting in the dark here. We don't know how high, high fence these dogs need. If we required a five-foot fence and he did it and the dog's got over the fence, you say, we'd say, well, no, you gotta go back and put in the six-foot fence at your own expense. Um, but we could give Mr. Barrow some flexibility and say, you know, if you wanna be absolutely sure, you can put in a six-foot fence right at the get-go to be sure you won't ever have to redo it.
Well, that's, that's part of the reason that I'm keeping the electrical fence is so they can't get to that point.
Yeah.
Um, and in terms of the six-foot fence, if I put in a six-foot fence to where you guys want me to, to put it in and do, um, I guess the addition below it, so they can't dig under it. If I'm not mistaken, um, those would be considered fixed structures. And we would have to, um, correct me if I'm wrong, um, you'd have to get engineering for that. You'd be talking about a, a sizable expense for, for that. Cause not, not only would we be over the height, we'd be right on the lock, uh, the lock lines of, of one section. If I put a fence that's lower, we would have, we would have, we would have come into that situation, especially because there, there's already, uh, the invisible fence there.
Six feet doesn't require building.
Once you go underneath, the, the code says-
Yeah, I can't speak to that, I'm, I'm not sure, I mean, we-
So the code says foundation to finish.
The zoning officer could speak to that, but he's not with us tonight.
Which, correct me if I'm wrong, um-
I was doing anything underground.
Uh, that, that was a proposal, right, to make it, so you, they, they don't dig underneath?
Most motion I made was six, uh, fi- six-foot height fence, so.
Dr. Z, can I say something? Because earlier you asked a question to the room and I didn't get to say something in response. You, you said specifically to people, but you opened it to the room. So I never take off my hat as a veterinarian, like, I'm sure you don't. And I've watched these dogs move. The shepherd, I think, has some degenerative changes probably in his hips. I don't think it's as agile as the border collie. The border collie is very agile. I don't see any signs of degenerative joint disease when I've seen a run. I think she could jump a five-foot fence. So that's just my professional opinion from observing her. I haven't manipulated her hips. I think that you also could potentially have an exam done on these animals and, you know, orthopedic-wise, evaluate the mobility of the joints to make a more informed decision. But I'm on the, I'm on the same boat as you, about six feet. But again, you know, that's just from my observations as a veterinarian.
Any other thoughts, comments?
Just about done six feet and ten different communities, and it seemed to work with different kinds of dogs, so.
Yeah.
That's kinda why I, I picked the numbers, I don't have the expertise. But I've sitting, if I've done many of these hearings.
Yeah.
Dan?
So just, I mean, this is arguing my anecdote, but have had many, many dogs over the years. Have always restrained them with, you know, always had a, contain them within a fence, four and a half, five feet tall, um, never, ever had a dog go over the fence, ever. Uh, yeah, it's arguing by anecdote, maybe it's been our dogs, um, but, you know, one more, one more data point. And I guess also on the point you raised about animal behavioralist, I mean, I would kind of defer to you, but I didn't, for me, I didn't feel like I heard enough to think that was necessarily something that as a board we would want to, you know.
Yeah, I'm not inclined.
As compared to just, you know, the issue was restraining the dog so that there won't be repeated episodes as compared to setting a precedence of, hey, when there's a nuisance dog, we, uh, require an owner to get a consult with a behavioralist. To me seemed like more than, than I would be inclined to do, given what we've heard tonight.
Yeah. I, I think it would be a good idea and I think that Lieutenant Tedstone and, you know, uh, Dr. Frank have both also suggested it. But again, I am not inclined to require it as part of, um, our determination. Um, okay, so.
I would draw that from the motion.
Um, can you repeat? I don't think it's been seconded yet. Can you repeat your motion?
Uh, to require a s- six-foot fence to be installed within sixty days. And during the period of time that the fence is installed, that the dogs can be confined in enclosures or within the premises of the house.
Do you think you can get a fence up faster than sixty days?
So there's only one guy that works at the house, the owner. Uh, I'm only allowed to have one person that, that works on the property every day.
But surely you could have others come to help if you needed it.
That's what I was saying. The comp, I own a company and we have more employees.
Yeah.
So I can have more guys do it. I just have one that's constantly.
Stationing.
Yeah, yes, I, I, that, um, that's constantly there. I'm sorry if I, if I wasn't clear, um, but yes, there, there's a, there's a bunch. Um, so can we put a fence up quickly? Yes, yes, we can. Right, in terms of you wanting a six-foot fence, um, we, I could put it up, right? Mostly in, um, the way my, my yard is set up, it's terraced, uh, already. In half the yard is, uh, terraced four and a half feet. Um, so if you put a six-foot, uh, uh, high fence on one section, it's gonna be ten and a half feet high. Uh, so it's, it's gonna be sizable. Um, on the low end of the yard, I guess if you guys wanted us to put a, um, a, a fence that's six feet, I mean, I could. If she clears a, a four-foot fence, she's gonna fall about forty feet, um, because of the way that the yard is set up. Um, right now, it's, um, it's leveled because we put in a new septic, um, a couple of years ago. So there's a, and goes, the septic is thirty-five by, um, thirty-five by forty, leech field is huge. Um, so it's sizable, flat area, which pitches off pretty steeply. Um, and then there's the driveway that goes to the back. If I put in that fence there, if she cleared it, it's, right now they can run down, they can run down the hill. And if they jump it, it's, I won't, I won't need the fence because I won't have a dog.
You know, I, I, I don't feel that we can design your fence, you know, not being on the property and seeing the topography. But I think we could, I should ask, could we require that the fence be high enough that the dogs can't possibly jump over? And if it's four feet in one uphill place and five or six in another.
I'm only to have, um, come, come to the house and, um, we've actually talked about that. He'll come by and he'll check it. I told these guys, whenever you.
I'm not sure what the, what the board is comfortable with. I just don't feel comfortable requiring, you know, the exact height if it's not appropriate in such places.
Well, the problem is it's gonna be an argument or it's gonna end up in, with a district judge.
Yeah.
You have to rehear the whole thing and spend legal fees.
Yeah, good point.
Not that we mind spending money on legal fees, but.
Yeah. So can we say something?
Can we do something where we say minimum four feet, but with a stipulation that should either dog ever escape the fence, that the owner then has to install a, replace it with a six-foot fence?
They get over a four-foot fence, I'll do an eight-foot fence for you. I'll double it and I'll, and I'll pay for it.
Fence is not adequate.
Right now you're gonna have two, two fences. You're gonna have the electrical fence and I can give you guys the receipts from the fence company and I can give you the receipts for the, uh, for.
Well, I got a lot of experience with electric fence, triple, triple line electric fences. And my cows will wear those electric fence right down South Main Street if they want to.
Like, that's the reason that, that there'll be two fences at that point.
Right, I think we're just talking about the physical fence.
Yeah.
What you wanna do with the electrical one is.
Oh, it's, it's already there. I've already done it. It, it, in the meantime, before this happened, I had it rezoned. It's already installed. I can give you, it's, give you guys the receipts for.
Yeah.
Have them.
That's fine.
I know, my cat can clear a four-foot fence, though. I'll tell you that right now.
Yeah, I'm sure you're.
My cat can clear a four-foot fence easily.
Yeah, I think cats and dogs are a little different.
They're different, but four-foot fence is too low, in my opinion.
Steve, do you think five feet would?
Now, I don't know the details. What Marion's point was, the topography of the property, we don't know. But maybe we specify it's a six-foot high barrier and if the property allows the fence to be five feet because it's a raised area or some, you know, but.
I agree. I incorporate that into the, to the motion.
I, I'm not sure the right wording, but I think four-foot high fence is insufficient, in my opinion. And you wouldn't wanna do it because then you'd have to put a new one in, like you just said, you run the risk of then having to pay for one or another way. It's not.
Yeah, it's much easier to do the fence all at once. When, when we install fences, we cut the fence posts.
Yeah.
So it's not like you've got room to put, easily put more fence on top.
On top, yeah.
That's, that's a wooden fence, right?
Yeah, wooden fence.
Yeah, my, my wife's. That, that wasn't even my, that she wants on move, so. That, that's what I have to work with, right?
Do, do you have a height idea, Steve?
Um, I, I don't have a specific height idea. Um, I, I think I am just hesitant to, um, dictate that it has to be a six-foot fence. Cause, uh, I mean, yes, I definitely know Border Collies who could clear a six-foot fence. I don't know specifically that Mr. Barrows' Border Collie could clear, um, a six-foot fence or that, um, you know, she necessarily will. But I also don't want to go, uh, too low on the fence and discover that I was wrong and now the, the, the dog has cleared the fence. Um, it does sound like if that is the case, that Mr. Barrows is, uh, more than willing to replace the fence. I mean, it, to some degree, we have to acknowledge that this is his profession. He is a landscaper specializing in hardscaping, I believe, right? Um, so, uh, that's not to say that it would be free for him to, uh, replace a fence, but I think that he could do it, uh, more quickly and, uh, at lower expense than, uh, any of us would, would be able to replace a fence. Um, and so that's why I am somewhat inclined to give some amount of leeway, but I do want there to be the ultimate protection that should, uh, lesser, uh, solution not work, that we don't have to go through this all again just to have the fence go from four feet to six feet, if that makes sense.
Actually, I have one other point to Paul's idea of sixty days. The only thing here is that this is sort of an unusual or a custom black aluminum fence. It may have nothing to do with installation. It may be a lead time to acquiring that kind of fence material. It's not like you're, you know, just taking a stockade fence from Home Depot and putting it up, which I wouldn't want at my house either. But I don't know if that's something that's, maybe you have an idea of the lead time on the.
I don't know because she hasn't picked.
Yeah, but it could be.
So that was, so I, I, I told her to pick one, right?
Yeah, yeah.
And, um, I don't know if you guys.
The magnitude of strength of, uh, criticism.
Yeah. Well, that's part of the reason why I was asking, how quickly do you think you can get one in? Because, you know, my.
Yeah.
As soon as it comes in, I can get it in the next day.
Yeah. I mean, my general, my inclination would be to make it a four-foot fence and have the deadline be end of June. But with a stipulation that should either dog ever escape, that you would need to replace it with a six-foot fence.
I, I would, uh, I think my suggestion would be to, uh, say a, an absolute minimum of four feet, depending on the topography, but it has to be effective to keep the dogs in. And knowing the dogs and knowing the land, I think we should say a, a fence, which in your judgment is reliably and effectively gonna keep those dogs confined. And then I think you'll decide whether it's five feet or six feet, depending on your dogs and, 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 but then it's up to you. You know, it's not like we made the wrong decision. It'll be you making the wrong decision if they get out. Does that make sense? Does that make sense?
That makes sense. I think that's essentially the same as what I was proposing.
I'd be comfortable with that as well.
But, I don't know, Paul, your motion is currently on the table unseconded. I don't know how you would feel about that particular amendment.
Just from a lawyer's point of view, it's just almost unenforceable to say install whatever fence you want. I, I couldn't get a judge to enforce that per se. Whereas.
Well, I think I, I would say a minimum of four feet, not whatever you want. The, the, to me, the key is the stipulation that if either dog ever escapes the fence, that then the owner has to replace the fence with a six-foot fence.
Or maybe minimum five feet, if that makes people more comfortable.
Five feet might be a little safer.
I, I'll, I'll go with five feet.
Five feet?
As a compromise.
Is, Chris, is that stipulation, would that be enforceable?
I think it would be.
Yeah. Okay.
I mean, everybody has the right to appeal, so the, you know, if the, the dog owner could appeal the district court. I think there's been enough evidence here showing, showing that there's justification for the action, so.
Yeah. All right.
These tables are two and a half feet right here. I'll just give you a first segment, thirty inches.
Can I just read the motion?
Yep.
Uh, to have a fence installed with a minimum of four feet, that will keep the dogs.
They were making it five feet.
Oh, five feet, okay, five feet, which will keep the dogs enclosed on their property with the stipulation that if the dog escapes, the fence would be replaced with a six-foot fence.
Then a fence of more appropriate height.
No, I would specify a number.
Okay.
Yeah, I would say five feet. If that doesn't work, six feet.
Is that what they have then?
Probably would want to add a timeframe.
Yeah, by the.
Within sixty days?
Uh, that was your suggestion.
Do you think you can do thirty days?
I mean, I, I would guess.
Do you have an idea? I mean.
I could ask her to, I don't know what it's like, honestly. If it were me, I could, I would go to Home Depot and grab a chain link.
Depending on where it's coming from.
Yeah. Yeah.
Where it's coming from.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, that's really a big problem, but it could be.
But that's why I, I, I doubled it by giving him an incentive. Give him sixty days to do it.
Thirty days is even more of an incentive.
Well, he has an incentive to get it up so his dogs can run free.
Right, so I, the idea is that dogs are confined to enclosures or a, um, within the house until the fence is installed. That'll get the wife to install the fence in a day.
Or a leash walk, restriction.
Or a what?
Leash walk.
Oh, right, or a leash walk if it's hooked up to a harness. Is that safe?
In the yard, they can be on a leash.
Yeah.
They said they didn't want that.
No, not a fixed leash, like you're attached to the leash. So you're there and the dog doesn't trip itself.
Yeah, you, in other words, you can take the dog out of the enclosure on a leash, walk around without, without the fence being there. This is only during the period of time until the fence gets installed. I just know how these things go with you and your wife having to reach agreement on something. It's likely to take a long time.
Um.
That's why I'm saying, that's why I suggest.
I can put up a, I can put up a, like a, a temporary chain link that's, wouldn't be permanent. And then until she picks something out and then put in something that's.
That's what I meant by closure.
So I, I'll do that. If, if you guys are, it's just, a chain link isn't as sturdy as a.
It doesn't matter what kind of fence, as long as it's barrier and it works. I mean, it doesn't matter to us.
No, no, I understand, I understand. I, I could put up chain, uh, you know, a hundred, a hundred yard, uh, yards of chain link in, in forty-five minutes. I mean, she's just not enrolled with.
Yeah, I, I don't think that we are making a determination about the aesthetics of the fence, just the effectiveness of it. So if you wanna put up a temporary fence that will accomplish what we're saying, essentially minimum five feet and it's gonna keep your dogs in the yard until, until such time as your wife chooses a more decorative, but still functional permanent fence. I think that's, that should be fine.
That's already up.
That's okay.
It's already up.
Chain link fence is already up.
It's been up for two weeks.
I feel like I drive by your house quite often and I don't.
You, you have to go to, into the backyard, right? It sits one above, um, where the deck to the wall.
Oh, okay.
It's thin and then behind the, um.
So you're gonna keep your dogs completely out of the front yard?
Well, yeah, they weren't gonna have access to the.
Okay.
Uh, to the front yard at all, right? There is another invisible fence in the front yard.
Okay, so that's all agreeable.
Yeah, okay.
So that, that would be the, Dan's not here to read it.
I am.
But the, the, the last piece would be to, to install tomorrow.
But no, he says it's already done.
It's already done.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's already done. I can shoot you guys pictures.
Yeah, okay, so then we don't need to, all we need to do is say that, that the dogs will be inside the enclosure while.
It's actually gonna be taken down this weekend because I have my daughter's birthday party, um, and then we're taking it down just so the kids can run around and we'll put it back up on, uh, on Monday.
All right, so then it'll be minimum five-foot fence unless one or either dog escapes, in which case you'll have to replace it with a six-foot fence and.
Within sixty days.
Sixty days and in the meantime, your current, uh, temporary fence should remain in place. When you take it down, I would just make sure that essentially your dogs have to be restrained at all times during your daughter's birthday party, you know?
They'll be inside, yeah.
Yeah, don't let them, don't let them roam around.
That's fine.
Yeah.
So that would be in, confined to the house, you say that?
Yeah, whenever there's a lot of people, just because it's a lot of noise.
Yeah.
I keep them inside, um, but yeah, thirty-five.
Fence is down, they're confined to the house or leash walked.
Sure. Um, okay, can.
Want me to read that again?
Please, yeah, read us the complete motion so we know what it is, that we're about to second and vote on.
Okay, to have a fence installed with a minimum of five feet, which will keep the dogs enclosed on their property with the stipulation that if the dog escaped, the fence would be replaced with a six-foot fence within sixty days. And until such time a permanent fence is erected, a temporary fence should remain in place.
Where the dog should be kept in the house, I mean.
Or the dogs should be confined inside the house.
Or on a leash.
Or at least one.
Yeah, or, yeah, or leash walked.
I'll go find it.
All right, someone second that?
I'll second.
Okay. Motion is seconded. Any further discussion?
Yeah.
Somebody second it.
Yes, Marion's seconding.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All right, we'll take a roll call. Marion?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
And I'm also aye.
Sure, I think, you know, it may make sense for me to come back or work with Diana and come back with an actual order that you would vote at the next meeting so that we can, it can be mailed, you know, to the property owner, I mean, that type of thing.
Right.
But I, I guess the sixty-day deadline would be from today. I think it's reasonable to.
Yeah.
Record that.
Yeah.
Yeah, the problem with that is I want the order effective right now.
Yeah.
So that the, the victim here is not subject to being unprotected for the period of time it takes for you to prepare the order. Come back here, you only meet every, every two weeks.
Yeah, but the temporary fence is already up. So there isn't a immediate action for the, uh, dog owner to take right now. So there isn't a immediate action for the, uh, dog owner to take right now. If it's, if there wasn't a temporary fence, then there would be, but.
I also want to start clock running on that issue.
Yeah. Um.
The, the minutes should be sufficient then. I mean, the, the order is in the minutes. I mean, I'm just, you know, the, the, the property owner, the dog owner is here, so it's not imperative we have it as a separate order, but I've, I've seen separate orders in the past, so I don't think it's imperative that it be a separate order.
Um, okay, well.
I'm going to make it a motion that this order takes effect nine o'clock, nine thirty, um, May twenty-nine, twenty.
Is this a separate motion, Paul?
Yeah, separate motion. What's today's date?
Today's is twenty-nine.
Okay, so this order should take effect nine thirty on the May twenty.
Twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine. Thank you.
Okay. I mean, I suppose if the order is taking effect right now, is there a need for a separate written order?
No, probably not. It's just reflected in the motion.
Okay, okay, that's fine.
Okay.
Great.
Do we need to vote on that motion?
Um, I guess, can someone second that?
I'll second it.
All right, uh, take a roll call vote. Marion?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
I'm also aye. Uh, all right. And then with that, the hearing has ended. Can I, uh, take a motion to close the, the hearing?
I think we did close the hearing, but.
Oh, I guess we, yeah, we did close the hearing already. Yeah, okay, great.
We were requested deliberations.
Yeah, all right, great, thank you. Thank you all so much. Um, and I believe in the meantime, um.
We just closed the hearing, right? Have we closed the hearing?
We had already closed that hearing.
Thank you, Chris. Um, in the meantime, um, I believe, uh, item number two, we decided to postpone to a later date because it is not, um, time sensitive. So we are on now item number three, consideration of appointment to the elder housing committee to reserve for its term to expire June fifteen, twenty twenty-eight. This is a new appointment. Sorry, I really should have amended our agenda at the very beginning and taken the first. It would have required, uh, approval.
Now she knows she never wants to be on the select board.
It would have required approval by the two parties, um.
So move the appointment.
Second. All right, it's been moved and seconded. Uh, before we vote, um, Teresa, do you want to say anything? We always, we always ask people if they want to say anything. You don't have to.
I'm good. Let's go back.
All right, great.
Thank you for volunteering.
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you.
That's how it goes.
Yeah.
Court, court.
I, I was also voluntold all the way up to this position, so. Um, all right, uh, motion and seconded, all in favor? Aye. All right.
Thanks.
Item four, consent agenda.
Move approval of consent.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, select board reports.
Well, under select board reports, we had Memorial Day, we had Dan present, we had Jeff present, it was well attended.
It's very, actually surprisingly well attended. I've been doing this for twenty-five, thirty years now. It was as long as you, but there's a lot of people there. I was surprised.
So thank you for those who attended. Thank you for attending. And for the public, thank you for attending.
All right. Any other select board reports? Town administrator reports?
Yeah, I have a handful tonight. Um, I'll go quickly though. Uh, staffing update, uh, we have a sustainability manager starting with us next Monday. Uh, I'll make an agenda item to introduce her formally, but just wanted to let you know that Amelia Landau uh, is going to be starting that role on this coming Monday. Office space set up for her in the select board town administrator office, just behind Jeannie, uh, and Abby Peter and all that, some good stuff set up, so. We'll, we'll give you a more formal introduction, uh, in the coming weeks.
Shared with Holliston, right?
What's that?
Shared with Holliston.
That's the shared position with Holliston. So on average, she would be spending about twenty hours supporting Sherburne and fifteen, uh, in Holliston. So that was all done, you know, the selection and all that was all done in coordination with our neighbor.
And we just split, it's a benefited position, so we split the benefits, is that?
That's correct, yeah. So the benefit, all the overhead costs would be split proportionally to the, the effort given to each community.
Would they technically be an employee of Sherburne or vice versa?
Yes, uh, this one, the, she's a, would be a, an employee of Sherburne.
Yeah.
Yeah. Would likely be housed here for most of the time. They, they're a little short on office space in the Holliston Town Hall and.
So her fifteen hours don't have to be physically in Holliston. She can be working on Holliston projects from Sherburne office.
They do have a, a policy where they can do some more work. Um, so she's likely to be doing some things for Holliston here in Town Hall, which is fine.
That's good. She has a home base here.
Yeah.
Yeah, sounds great.
Um, update on the classification and compensation study. Um, as you recall, it's funded by some ARPA funds. We're working with the staff, department heads and a consultant. Uh, we're reviewing job descriptions, each employee is doing a questionnaire form that's going to be submitted to the consultant and we'll then be meeting, uh, one-on-one with all, all the staff and reviewing those position descriptions in their forms. Uh, those meetings will be coming soon, uh, starting shortly. The consultants identified sixteen comparable communities. They're going to pull some salary data from. Uh, all the positions included are all of the non-union positions. Um, fifty-some odd positions will be included in this, this compensation study. Uh, the consultant will be pulling some market data, salaries and other, um, forms of compensation. And they're starting to be collecting that, um, data shortly. Update on the earmarks for F Y twenty-six. So on the, at the state level, we've heard that uh, the, the House budget did include, uh, James Arena DeRosa, DeRosa did include and I believe it still carried a small amount, um, maybe twenty thousand, he didn't give a number, but he said it was a modest amount, uh, towards the Sherburne, um, history center. This Senate budget, however, includes fifty thousand dollars for maker space, uh, for the Dover Sherburne Regional School System. And we did hear back from our federal representatives that our request didn't make the cut for federal earmarks.
I think the thing I mentioned to you though is that maker space was not a Sherburne initiative. It must have come directly.
It seems, I, I reached out to the superintendent to get a little bit more of, of a background. It may have been a, a very late request. Um, and coordinated request through Senator Roush's office, but I don't know the details.
Cause I brought it up because secondly, I don't think Rebecca, Becca, uh, has Dover as one of her towns.
Yes.
So it's kind of an odd thing, you know, it appears to be a Sherburne one because she's a biddie, but it's representative of regional school, you know, I mean.
I mean, it, it will benefit Sherburne students.
No, it will, but I mean, she doesn't cover Dover in her territory, so it's kind of unusual. It's happened since.
But fortunately, there was a, a large donor towards the Sherburne History Center. A quick update on that. Uh, we've, uh, given the architects, uh, you know, the go-ahead to move forward rapidly on the final design and to enter the bidding stages. We're hopeful that we'll have that process and have a contractor onboard this fall. Uh, I've been working with, um, the, the private donor as well to get, you know, that relationship going and so that we can understand the, the funding and having that in hand before we enter into any form of contract for construction. Typically on projects that are over one point five million in construction, an owner's project manager is required. We're under that threshold. It is best practice to have an O P M. Uh, so just something to, that, that we'll be, we'll be thinking through. Sean and I will certainly be involved throughout, probably functioning in that capacity uh, without need to, to hire a, a separate consultant for that. The North Sherburne Water and Sewer District will hold their second meeting next Wednesday. Uh, and Mary and I also, that same day, earlier in the day, have a meeting with Natick to, to further discuss the details of the I M A for wastewater. I've received a number of complaints about signage townwide, just in general, uh, like illuminated signs on private property, signs on the right of way, uh, illuminated signs, temporary signs, banners, sandwich boards, that sort of thing. So I have, uh, brought that forward to, to the chief building inspector, Chris Canning. He's, he's done a walkthrough of the village center and actually talked to a number of the property owners, uh, advising them, reminding them, educating them on what the zoning requirements are. Illuminated signs do require special, a special permit or a special approval. And temporary signs also, uh, need approval through the Z B A. One temporary sign is allowed at any given time per permit with the Z B A, not multiple. So I just want to bring that to your attention. It is also, um, highlighting the need for some zoning updates regarding signage. So just keep that on our radar for next year. Update on the M V P or the municipal vulnerability preparedness two point O grant. That was a hundred thousand dollar grant that Sherburne received, fifty thousand of which was for updating the plan, eight hundred fifty for implementing the seed project. I had a meeting with the M V P office staff last week. They, uh, do a cook-off meeting or an intro meeting with the project manager, the lead uh, person in the community. For now, that was, that's me, until Amelia comes onboard and can be my, my sidekick in that matter. The first step in that process is develop a core team. Their model has that core team made up of mostly town staff, but in smaller towns, some volunteers as well. So we kind of fit into that. We'll have staff and some volunteers helping on the so-called core team, which will then hire a planning vendor that will help us go through the process to update the two point O plan. Uh, there'll be larger meetings with the community and stakeholders, a whole community liaison group that'll be developed, um, about a year-long process, which, once we complete it, will open up, uh, the opportunities to seek, um, some fairly sizable grants to do projects that might deal with flooding, drought, heat, address severe weather, climate change, that sort of thing. So completing this process opens up a whole, um, grant opportunity, grant funding opportunity for us. Uh, and the last thing I wanted to just put out here to see if you're interested and we could bring it back at your next meeting, if you are. A number of Town Hall staff have inquired as to whether the board would consider Town Hall, uh, summer hours. The Town Clerk's office has, has started their traditional summer hours where they're not open on Fridays and they adjust their schedules accordingly. In reality, um, Fridays, we have staff in the select board town, town administrator's office, the treasure collector's office, the accounting office and one person in the C O A office on a regular Friday. Uh, in the summers, it gets a bit slower on Fridays than the other days, so wanted to raise that up as, as an idea, if, if it was one that the, the select board would like to, to discuss. We can bring it back at a, the next meeting with some more details, but.
Have we done that in previous summers?
I'm not sure if we have in the recent past. Um, you know, treasure collector is here, she can speak to that, visit the offices or the counter is on a Fridays in the summer. It can be pretty quiet. Uh, most of the other offices in Town Hall, like the, the permitting, uh, land use, they're not open Fridays anyway. Uh, the assessor's office is not open on Fridays. The accounting office, uh, is, is open on Fridays, but they don't really have public facing counter. The public facing counters really are the, the treasure collector's office and I guess the select board, you know, T E A's office.
Is that something that would generally require a select board vote or would you, as the town administrator, have the, uh, latitude to, to make that decision? It feels more of a day-to-day operations.
That's such a good question. As you say that, I just have the same thing.
Yeah, this, this is.
Yeah, you have your, your finger on the pulse.
Yeah, this feels like a day-to-day operations, kind of a, of an issue that we would just be like, what do you think we should do, Jeremy? And then we would just go with that.
It's too high, it's too high. Doesn't need to be that high.
We don't want any time avoid escaping.
So it sounds like you're, I, I could, I'll bring back a, a proposal.
I don't think they want you to. I think they just want you to say.
You can just tell us what you decided and then we'll, we'll bless your decision.
Looks like Sean may have a hand.
Oh, oh, sorry, Sean. Has that been up for a long time?
My hand has, my hand has nothing to do with summer hours. Uh, I was just going to point out that you guys skipped an item for Woodhaven.
No, we didn't.
Uh, we deferred that item. I got your text. I'm sorry.
Oh, I don't think anyone else heard that because people were, people stayed on for quite a while. They finally got off. Okay.
Yep, thanks, Sean.
Sorry. Uh, all right, that's all the T A updates. Okay, so now we move to uh, executive session part two. Um, and, uh, I do declare that an executive session is necessary for the purpose of preparations for contract negotiations. Um, item two being, uh, the, uh, police lieutenant and then item three being the D P W director. Um, so I move that we enter executive session. Uh, all right, it's moved and seconded. I'm going to take a roll call vote. Marion?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Uh, Paul?
Aye.
Uh, Jeff?
Aye.
And I'm aye as well. Uh, and we will not be returning to open session. Jeremy, can you stop?